This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
Call to order, the board meeting for tonight. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Secretary Iverson, have we complied with the Openset Meetings Law notification?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Could you please do a roll call to verify quorum?
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Dux?
Here.
Commissioner Vu? Is absent. Commissioner Jean?
Here.
Commissioner Spindler?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
And Commissioner Cummins?
Here.
Great, thank you. I understand no one signed up for the public forum tonight, so we'll move past that. So superintendent, superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the events for the Board of Education's calendar in January. On January 12th at 7:00 PM in the Administration Building, there is a parent advisory council meeting. January 14th at 4:30 PM in the Administration Building, there's a Budget Development Committee meeting. January 19th at 10:30 AM, there is a Policy and Governance Committee meeting, and there's a possibility that that meeting may be rescheduled. On January 19th at 7:00 PM, there is a school board meeting. I do want to point out that from January 21st to the 23rd, the WASPY Convention will take place in Milwaukee, and you have two delegates who are going, Chris Hambach-Boyle and Catherine Dux, and I will be attending as well. And then on January 27th at noon, the Education Foundation Board will meet at Whipley. And on January 29th at 4:00 PM, the Buildings and Grounds negotiations will take place, and Commissioners Johnson and Vu will attend those negotiations. And that's it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right, from my report, a number of things. Just reminder, there's two positions up for election this year, school board election. The terms are for three years, and the deadline for submitting the nomination papers, I believe, is tomorrow, correct? Superintendent Hardbeck mentioned the Budget Committee. She mentioned that it'll be meeting January 14th, and they're going to start a needs assessment to start informing next year's budget priorities and possibly referendum discussions at the same time, just so everyone knows what's going on there. Reminder to board members, the NASB Annual Conference is March 21st through 23rd in Nashville. And if you're interested, contact Secretary Iverson. And another thing I want to mention is the Chamber has its annual trip to Madison to discuss with legislators issues that are important to Eau Claire and the Chamber members, and that's on January 28th. So if any board members are interested in attending that, I know at least one or two are going to go, you can contact, you can see an email from Scott Rogers from the Chamber if you're interested in that, and contact Secretary Iverson if you want to go. And one last thing, it is our turn in our district to plan the Legislative Breakfast along with Altoona and Chippewa Falls that we do three times a year, it's our turn. And just to kind of put it on your calendar, we've tentatively set February 6th, Friday of February 6th, at Prairie Ridge at 7:00 AM. I'll keep you informed to see if that holds. So we're going to try and do it then at that time. I'll have to get back to a few other legislatures to confirm that. So that's my report for tonight. Student Representative Report, who would like to go first? Anna, would you like to go?
Yeah, I'll go first tonight. Not much to report on tonight, I'm just kind of getting back into this whole school mode still. But first, I'd like, so a few meetings ago, I mentioned maybe reconsidering the grade ranking, like the way that was done. And I've started looking into the way that a few other districts have done it, and haven't found anything conclusive yet. So just wanted to let you know, keep you updated on what I've been doing. And then I also would like to just shed a little light on something that North has been doing lately. A lot of the alumni are back, and so there have been a lot of alumni games. So I know our hockey team, the alumni hockey players, all got together, and that is just a really cool event that brings everyone back together. And tomorrow, the dance team is performing, the alumni dancers, some of them. So I think that is something that North has been doing really well, and I'd like to see that done at more schools. It's a great event.
Great, thank you. Jonah?
So you guys all know that this year, the district bought a bunch of Chromebooks for the high schools to use, and just a bunch of influx of new technology really within the district. And, I mean, I'm a teenager, I think I know how to use this stuff, but I was kind of playing around on it today in a free period, and I realized there's a lot of things, a lot of things that I like, a lot of programs that I really don't know how to use very well. And I think that's actually a theme for a lot of high schoolers. We have this new technology, and we really don't understand the power at our hands. So I think something that the district could do is get these new Chromebooks, but then really follow up, make sure they're being utilized, their full potential, and maybe have in homerooms or in something, something kind of comprehensive, and go through the tools we have at our hands. Also brings up another point. Homerooms, as a senior, have been really difficult. We've, just homerooms in general, the whole PBAS thing, it's come to a point where they're just preaching the same thing over and over. And I think especially for the senior class, it's really difficult to go in there and have someone tell you how to flush a toilet and things like that. So what I'm proposing, something I brought up early in the year with college planning and the struggles of a senior, maybe combine the two, have for the future, look into like some sort of seminar at the start of the senior year for those people, so they have a college planning idea going into it, and you can really use those homerooms for something that's positive.
Okay, thank you, Jonah. Thank you very much. Okay. Yes, so now we have committee reports. First, I have Policy and Governance. Commissioner Hambach, oh, you want to do that? Commissioner Dux?
Yeah, I'm going to do it. We met this morning at 10:30, and we discussed middle school and high school class credits, and how those work in between those two segments. And the other thing that we spent some time on was the final touches on public school open enrollment. So very interesting topics.
All right, great, thank you. And I understand Commissioner Hambach-Boyle, we have a charter school, a charter committee report?
Yes, I do. Yeah, we met just before Christmas break. We have spent the initial meetings going through the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction Charter School Contract Reviewer Benchmarks, which have been interesting to go through both McKinley and Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School, and look at all the aspects of the benchmarks to see how they're part of their contracts, so that the group kind of gets an idea of what a template would look like, so as we get into maybe being more innovative and having more instrumentality charter schools within our district, they're very aware of how that all fits together. So that's what we've been spending time on.
Interesting, okay, great. And I wasn't sure, Commissioner Dux, if you had a foundation or if you had a meeting recently? Okay, so we don't have one of those? Next week? Okay, so next time? Okay, all right, great, thank you. So Commissioner Hambach-Boyle, a legislative update for us?
Well, WASPY did not update since December 19th, so I really can't go with their legislative update. But our wonderful Leader Telegram this past Saturday ran a Seeking Common Ground article written by Eric Lindquist. And so it was very enlightening, because it does cover all of our legislators that are in office right now, and it kind of goes through the committees they're all on, and it also talks about what they see as their priorities and focus for the upcoming legislative session. So the article was called Seeking Common Ground. You can go to the Leader Telegram and really update yourself on what that all means. It was a good read.
Great, thank you. I'm sure WASPY will have lots of updates coming soon with the new legislative session coming up, so keep an eye out for that.
Yeah, it wasn't updated yet today.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so next on our agenda is the Consent Resolution. Here we'll consider approval of the following items. Board members have been given background on this or have discussed them previously, and they'll be acting on with one vote without discussion. But if a board member wants to discuss any, you may pull it out of the consent agenda, and we'll vote on it separately. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 15th, 2014 meeting, the minutes of the closed session on December 15th, 2014. The Human Resources Employment Report, a motion to approve the Head Start Continuation Grant?
Pull that, please.
Pull that, okay. Sound like two, let's pull it there. Okay, a motion to approve the, to adopt the new policy, 622.3 Fund Balance, which we've talked about a number of times. Motion to approve the revisions to Policy 411 on Equal Employment Opportunities. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for all of those except the approval of the Head Start Continuation Grant? We have a motion from Commissioner Cummins, and could I have a second from Jean?
Second.
So we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I think, no, we can do it. Yes, we can do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So we had polled the approval of the Head Start Continuation Grant. Yes, Commissioner Dux?
I just had a couple of questions. I don't know if it's hard to do both of them at the same time. I just wondered how, I noticed that they have a nurse that's on staff, I believe, and just wondered how that's, who pays for that? Yes, I'm looking to see if the city-county health department pays for it, or someone else.
So ours is just part of, and Robin could probably speak to that too, we share a school nurse with several other buildings.
So that's the grant that we have for that? Is that right? No? Sorry.
It's all right.
No, our nurses are district funded. That grant was probably expired two years ago? Maybe three?
Okay, I'm always dogging this issue.
No.
With Jonah's mother. Okay, my, thank you. My other question is, you said something about you'd like to see the board more involved, and I just wondered how you mean that.
We're still working on that. One of the things that we had done last year is we had Chris Hambach-Boyle come to a few of our policy committee meetings last year, and we thought we needed to formalize the process and add it to some of the board's committees. We just haven't looked through all of the Head Start Performance Standards to figure out how and what exactly we need to have done. So we'll be looking to that in the future.
Great, okay. Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
I really had fun reading the grant, and I wanted to thank our early learning programs for continuing to connect that socially-emotional developmental piece to the academics. And it was fun to be able to look at your data over time and what that looked like. I had fun. The thing that piqued my interest too was when the grant mentioned the Parent-Family and Community Engagement Self-Assessment. I noted you developed goals, and that they had to do with the food insecurity and a comprehensive medical services, which is so indicative of what we mean in our society today. So I just really wanted to thank you for those two pillars in doing that, so thanks a lot.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve this?
I move approval of the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Good, okay. So we have a motion to approve this contract, and a second, I think we do need a roll call vote on this one, so. Unless there's any further questions.
Yes. Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean? Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And thank you for all the work on the Head Start Grant also, that's much appreciated. Okay, so we have no individual resolutions at this time, so we'll adjourn to committee, or committee reports. And the first on our agenda here is the continuation of the discussion on forming our Compensation Study Committee. So just a reminder, last time we had a discussion about the formation of these committees, what the charge should be, and you know, what should be to make up the committees, and so forth. And based on that input and agreement last time that I would meet with Commissioner Hambach-Boyle as well as the superintendent and Dan here, as well as feedback from Bob Butler, our facilitator, we came up with what hopefully you have before you now to look at. And I don't know if we want to put that up on the screen, it might make sense to do that. So we had, just to review what we came up with, and then we'll take comments from the board and recommendations or changes. We came up with three committees. One is a Teacher Certified Staff Compensation Committee, one was an Hourly Staff Compensation Committee, and a third was a Non-Teacher, Non-Certified Salaryed Staff Compensation Committee. And at the beginning of the report, we put in what we thought, based on the discussion last time, a reasonable charge for these committees would be. So that's what we came up with here. So now I'm open, maybe we could talk about the charge first, if there's any comments or questions from board members on this, how you feel about it. The goal is hopefully maybe next time we'd have something solid enough to vote on, if possible, so. Okay, I think people are studying it a little bit, which is fine. I'll just point out one thing while board members are doing that. We have been trying to be more goal-focused with, and strategic planning-focused a little bit more here, and that's why I included Goal Two, which, to make sure we align with our goals, and that seemed like the major goal that is impacted, or would impact this here. So that's why that's number one on there. We did talk about, especially number three, about being fiscally sustainable. We don't want to essentially promise things we cannot do, cannot form, but we did give, want to give flexibility in looking at a lot of areas that we might adjust to pay for other components of a plan that the committees might come up with. And we want it to be evidence-based, so if you look, oh, for number four, we did want the committees to continue intrinsic or non-monetary opportunities that may help retain or attract employees here. And number five was, the point is we want to be evidence-based, use the information we have to help inform our decisions, as well as number six also, on practices. So that was the idea with those recommendations, based on what we heard last time and our discussion in our ad hoc committee. So again, any questions or comments? Okay, well, this is nice. Kind of surprise, but this is a pleasant surprise, thank you very much.
No, you did a good job. I think you covered most of the bases.
Good.
I do.
Great, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, and I want to point out that after that paragraph we said shall provide monthly updates to us so that we can find out what's going on, but also we can give feedback as needed to the committees, you know, so that they don't drift off and find out, oh, that's not what you should really be doing, for example. Okay, any comments about having three committees, or questions or comments about that, the three different committees we suggested? So again, to have a Teacher/Certified Committee, to have an Hourly Staff Compensation Committee, and basically a Salaryed Staff Compensation Committee. Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Superintendent Hardbeck, is it going to be too burdensome for you, the Business Director and the HR Director, to serve on each of the three committees?
I think it will be a kind of a scheduling challenge.
So would we, I guess I would want to provide the flexibility and leave it up to the superintendent as far as whether they split that up and, you know, maybe one at each of the three committees, or if they rotate, or so that there wouldn't be the expectation that there couldn't be committee meetings unless all three of them were at each.
Give us some flexibility, and be very much appreciated.
And I would say even if there was an alternate that you would say would be okay at 10, that would be fine on that. So I agree, I worried about that even with three committees, so, yes.
So then I would assume then, two, the principals would likely not be the same. There would, you know, one elementary principal would only do one of the three committees, and so there would be three elementary principals on one of the various committees, correct?
Yes.
So then I would have the same question about the high school, and maybe even the middle school principals, if that would extend to an assistant principal could fill that position, or again, the high school, middle school, maybe they tag team meetings, or, you know, rotate somehow, and so I wouldn't, it's, this representation seems logical, but I wouldn't want the committee to be slowed down because there just aren't enough people to go around for the work that they're doing.
Yeah, and once again, I would say that would give us more flexibility if we, you know, we could have alternates, or if we could have alternates to those positions.
Okay, so we could put that language for each of those, or alternately appointed, similar skills or something. Okay, okay, good comment. Anything else? Yes?
Yeah, we'll talk more about committees. As I recall my sociology class from, you know, a couple decades ago, that a committee gets unwieldy and unworkable when it reaches a certain number of people, I think it was like 15 to 20. So is it possible that there would be some overlap if you're looking at, you know, special ed, two teachers in the specials, two teachers in the special education, two teachers from elementary? Perhaps if you had a special education teacher that worked in elementary or middle, you know what I mean, that there, I'm just afraid that when you get a group too large...
So you're basically saying, could we find a personnel who would play a dual role, cover both positions, for example? Yes, Commissioner Dux?
Represent one area, you know, or two areas in the same person. How often are you thinking that these committees will meet?
I believe Bob Butler was, in the past, he's met about once a month, I believe, for it. But they might do, it's unclear, they could do some work when he's not here, you know, preparing for it, it's possible.
Thank you for anticipating my question. So he's going to be facilitating to these committees, but they also might be meeting without him?
Well, I don't think the whole committee would, but maybe there's some background work that some of them would do.
Okay.
I think he would prefer, if the whole committee meets, I think he would prefer to be there to facilitate. And if necessary, if they do want to meet more often, I'm sure he would do that.
Sure. Well, thinking, I guess, thinking they're going to be, have a facilitator, maybe, and I was just counting, that 24, it's probably on the outside, but if you've got a couple, you know, if the administrator, the business director, and the HR director aren't at each meeting, you know, already, you're paring that down, so are these committees going to be formed by the HR department?
If you look at the end, we say we'll accept volunteers. Obviously, there's some that are identified here, like business director, but we have indicated that we'd accept volunteers, and we'll just, you know, if there's more than two, for say two special, we would pick them by random, by random, that's what we have listed here.
And by "we," you mean, "k?"
Whoever, whoever wants to do it randomly, you know, it's basically a random choice.
Or if there's not enough, would there be recruiting to fill, you know, to make sure that somebody from the secondary, you know, I mean, there's that possibility as well.
Good question, hadn't considered if there weren't enough volunteers. Any discussion on that, I'd be open to that, to address that problem if it arises.
Unlike the whole voluntoad theory, we need to...
Say that again, Commissioner?
Voluntoad.
Volunteer somebody?
Who's the Director of Curriculum and Instruction? Do we have one?
Good point. We do not right now, so.
Okay, so do we anticipate needing somebody who has that sort of background, or, and if we do, why would they need to be on the hourly and non-certified?
Yeah, we'll have to find someone for that. It's a good question about hourly, and I did have Bob Butler look at that, maybe he did not catch that, it's a good point though, with that. I don't see a necessity for it myself on those two committees. Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
I see your point on that, Wendy Su. The other thing too, as far as curriculum instruction, maybe the Teaching and Learning Department can figure out who they want to represent that piece?
So we could change the language, just say a representative from...
Teaching and Learning?
Teaching and Learning, or something of that nature.
Does that make sense?
Or Curriculum Instruction.
Superintendent Hardbeck, does that make sense, to have someone from Teaching and Learning fill that last position, since we don't have a Director of Curriculum Instruction?
Yes, we have a number of coordinators who might be willing to serve.
Okay, so then is there, why would it be important to have someone from Teaching and Learning be on the hourly or the non-certified committee?
Well, you know, this was a committee structure that was suggested to you by WASPY, so I think probably getting some input from Bob Butler about why he thought that was an important representation would be helpful, just to clarify, to see whether or not we actually need those positions.
So before we bring this to resolution next time, perhaps in our written materials, we could have his comments about that before we include that position?
Sure, I could, I could ask him that question, and whatever he recommends, I could make the change and give you his, what he said for next time, yeah.
And on the same note, maybe it's to provide a similar size group? I guess I didn't add this one up, but is it, I'm trying to imagine why, for B through F in Committee Two, why, for example, a Buildings and Ground employee at the elementary schools versus the middle schools versus the high schools versus the district office, and I'm pretty sure there's only one employee at the district office that works for Buildings and Grounds, why they would have a different perspective to bring to the committee? And then do we even have anyone in food service Buildings and Grounds? And I suppose we have assistants, but in the Special Ed Department, I mean, that doesn't even apply really, does it?
I think that's a good point. So the question is, how do we do the language here? We could just say how many of those total we want from enough diverse places, we could do that. That would, I think that would make sense. Basically, we use the original, the teacher one as a guide, I just filled that in, but I can see, this adds up to be a lot right here. So we could certainly tweak that language there, because it's B through F you're talking about, right? Number two?
Correct.
List so many.
Well, I don't even think C really even makes sense. We don't have, at least that I'm aware of, a Buildings and Grounds employee who would be specifically affiliated with special education, and so, you know, or the district office, we have one person who works down at the district office, so...
Right.
I mean, some of these just don't make sense. You want a diverse representation, so that everyone's interests are, you know, there's a broad spectrum of voices, but...
How about I, how about we tweak that language, the group of us again, to say something about, we'll have, you know, I don't know, two of each of those from the four, like elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, something like that. Maybe in one sentence. Is that what you're getting at essentially?
Yeah, and maybe you want to get input either from the union leadership, or the, and really probably the directors responsible for these, you know, supervising these different groups. So Charlie might say, well, you know, it might make more sense to have a custodian and a maintenance person, you know, it's kind of the different job positions within those employee groups. And so if you get some input from... those employee groups. And so, if you get some input from the work groups and people who know their, their work a little bit better, they might come up with something that makes more sense than we do.
I like that. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I, I think that's why we brought it up tonight, to clean it up, but, and then take input as well.
Yeah, and that might, that might help us with the language a little bit also. Okay, okay. And I agree with you that the size of that would be pretty large already, that committee, without changes to that, so that makes sense. Commissioner Dux.
Is there some point at which these committees are going to see the other ones' work and maybe come to consensus about some of the things? Maybe they're studying some of the same issues?
I was, I was imagining that when Bob Butler starts, that we'd have a discussion with him, because he's going to facilitate all those, that he can hopefully facilitate that happening. That, that's my hope, at least. And we can, we can specify to him.
Well, either that or he has a process where he makes the conclusions for us.
Conclusions, you mean from the committees? Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I think, didn't Bob say that he was going to do a gathering of everyone in the beginning?
I don't, I don't remember that.
Okay.
Perhaps, I don't remember. So Commissioner Johnson to address your questions about Committee Two. If you look at Committee Three, we said like two from each department, and you notice we did not, you know, specify which ones, but I think, again, the goal would be to not have ten departments right on there, so...
Well, I think that group's going to be smaller than the other two anyway, so...
Okay, this is some great feedback to clean it up. It sounds like the general structure, the general form is good. We just need to specify it a little bit better, especially that Committee Two. Does that sound right, everyone? Okay, so if it's, if we get enough feedback in time, and again, Chris and I and Superintendent and others could meet, get some feedback from Charlie and Sue and others, hopefully we'll have something solid for you for next time we vote. Does that sound reasonable?
As an individual resolution?
Correct, correct. And of course, if, if you see amendments that need to be made or too much wording, we'll do it again. We'll send it back again, so... Great, well, thank you for the, the great feedback. And thanks, thank you, Chris, for meeting with us, as well as the Superintendent and Dan, meeting with us to get this together. Appreciate that. Yes, right, any public comments on this, on this topic? Okay, okay, great. I seem to have misplaced my agenda and my machine is down, but I believe next is the calendar committee on our agenda. So, Ms. Marks, are you going to do that part? Okay, great, thank you. So we'll give you a chance to set up.
Okay, as James is passing around a couple of documents, just so that you have them close and can easily see what it is we're talking about, I just want to start out by saying that the 1516 calendar proposal comes to you after a lot of work from many people. And part of that is listed here in front of you, the calendar committee members. We presented to you last year this current school year calendar, and then at that point in time sought out additional volunteers to be part of the calendar committee, because they heard how much fun it was and what a great, exciting time it was to be part of the calendar committee, and everybody wanted to join our club. So, we got additional members to be part of the calendar committee. So, our team grew, and several of these individuals are here with us tonight. And so, if I could ask members of the calendar committee who are in the audience, if you'd stand up, please, so that the board can see that you're here. Thank you very much. This group of individuals, yes, has worked very hard to get us to this point with a recommended 1516 calendar. We've done ample amount of research, we've listened to staff members, to parents, and as you know, the calendar is always a very touchy subject in any school district, because you're trying to accommodate many needs with one tool. So, I just want to thank everybody who is on this calendar committee for the hard work and dedication that they put in to get us to this point, because it was a lot of hard work. And we certainly wouldn't be here without the folks that are up on the screen and the members that are here tonight. Thank you, too. Okay, so the committee work, as indicated in the executive report, there were four areas which the committee focused on when we looked at creating the calendar. The first one was to end the school year earlier, but on the same date for all levels. So, this came, again, everything that we focused on came to us from either trial and error from previous attempts, or from input that we received from parents and/or staff members over the course of the past year or so. So with this one, what we looked at was being able to end the school year earlier, but making sure that all levels, elementary, middle school and high school, all ended on the same date. And so, that was one of the focal points of the group. Another one was to incorporate teacher professional development time within the workday. As you know, we've been coming to you a lot with this topic for several years, and have kind of been taking small steps every opportunity we can to be able to find these pockets of time for our staff to get together to find opportunities to work together, to be able to meet the increasing needs that we find in our state to increase student achievement. And in this new calendar, as we indicated, I think the last time that we presented, as we kind of gave a little, kind of a peek about what the calendar was gonna, a foreshadowing of the calendar was going to contain, we do have opportunities built into this calendar for full day professional development opportunities, for staff to be able to get together and work on collaborating, to be able to move students forward in our district, and we'll expand on this a little bit later. We also looked at assuring that the elementary schedule, out of session days, so days that students, elementary students are not in school, coincide with either a middle or high school schedule. So, this was something that, of course, was near and dear to the parents. They wanted to make sure that elementary kids were going to be home with either a middle school or a high school sibling, so that it helped them with childcare issues. So when we looked at developing our calendar, we made sure that the elementary and middle school schedule kind of coincided, so that there was always an opportunity for that family issue to be met as we move forward with developing a modified calendar for 1516. And then the fourth thing that we looked at was incorporating enough minutes into each level to account for a minimum of five inclement weather days. I have it broken down here so that you can see what that meant, actually. For the elementary, there is no change in the daily schedule of minutes. Their schedule of minutes does and always has, at least for as long as I've been here, and I know for a time prior to that, included in excess of minutes in their schedule, above and beyond what DPI requires. So, as it stands right now, without any modifications, the elementary daily schedule throughout the whole year includes an additional eight point five inclement weather days, above and beyond what is required through DPI. At the middle school, we're looking to add an addition of twenty-four minutes into their daily schedule, and this would give us six inclement weather days included into the calendar. And then at the high school, there's an additional fourteen minutes added into the daily schedule. And then additionally, we're looking at eliminating the Wednesday student early release time, which would be an additional twenty-six minutes weekly. So as it stands right now, on Wednesdays, students get out twenty-six minutes earlier, although the buses don't come earlier. So, this was an attempt at the high schools to be able to provide some of that collaboration time for staff by having students out of class early. And so, by including the additional fourteen minutes into their daily schedule and giving those twenty-six minutes back to instructional time, throughout the year, we're able to include that five inclement weather days into the schedule. Wendy Sue?
Why?
Why, which part why?
Why do we need to include five or six inclement weather days into the schedule by expanding the, the day that long?
Some of the feedback that we got from, from parents and I think also from staff was the idea that when we have inclement weather days and we have to make up those days, it pushes the end of school further and further into the, you know, the summer months of June. And, and people would really like to see us not be, not have to be able to do that. So, building in these additional minutes into the calendar gives us a little bit of flexibility, so that in the event that we had a really severe winter or a severe cold snap like we did last year, we could either call off the, the days or we could, you know, have delayed starts with no penalty, you know, when the nice weather comes. And that seemed to be something that was very, very important to families.
So, and I, I knew that much, but I suppose we can assume that climate change will continue to bring us more extreme winters, but the last two were, you know, worse than any on memory, at least back to back. And so, I don't know if Kay got my email at about four o'clock this afternoon, you know, for us to change the entire calendar for two kind of unusual occurrences, and, you know, have we ever taken five before, ever, or even gone beyond our two that we've had scheduled in?
Well, we have had, we've had two scheduled snow days or inclement weather days. One year, I think we took three days, three additional days. So I'm just going like for the last kind of two-year trends. But I think one of the things that, you know, as the legislature was kind of lobbied to, you know, change the idea from, you know, days to minutes, was to be able to provide some of that flexibility. And so, if, if we, if we could do that in a finite amount of time and, and not have to make up those days in the summer, I think it's a benefit, you know, for the staff. I think it's a benefit for the, for our families. And it allows people to, to kind of plan.
And if I understand it right, if we don't use those, it's extra instructional time that's provided.
That's correct. If we don't use the days, it's extra instructional time.
So do we have this historical data or not?
I did contact Student Transit, who will be presenting at the end of this presentation, and asked if they had any historical data about that. So, I'm assuming that Jim may or may not have more information for you when he gives his presentation about that. Okay?
Commissioner Zhang, I think, was next, and I'll go Commissioner Dux.
Okay, I understand why they want the schools to end at the same time, so to have kids, older siblings watch younger's, and to have everybody out at the same time. But what were some of the reasons that were given to end this school year sooner? Because statistically, the people, the population that gets hit the hardest during a longer summer is the, you know, minorities. And so, what were some of the reasons why they wanted the school years to end sooner?
From the parent's standpoint?
All of the reasons that you guys considered?
Well, I, I think maybe Dr. Hardbeck may have more information on that, as I think most of that came from the parents and the parent information that, that came forward. I think some of that may actually have to do with what was just discussed, and the fact that when we have inclement weather days, it pushes things out farther. And so, when we have a school year that already ends in the second week of June, and then there's the potential that you're going to have to push it back even farther due to inclement weather days, that that gets farther and farther out for families. But I don't know, Dr. Hardbeck, do you have other information about what the parents had to say?
No, I think you, I mean, I think that is the rationale.
Okay.
If I could add one thing, from the, from the staff perspective, your professional staff that are seeking additional educational opportunities over the summer, there are many of our higher education institutions that are starting courses within the second week of June for, for graduate work, and also workshops that are being generated by CISA and, and other educational opportunities for our staff. So that was another thing. Once we push through additional time into that second or into that third week of June or teetering on that point, it starts to start, it starts to mess with the opportunities that our professional staff have also.
I, I like, I like that reason, but was a, was a longer school year ever even a, an option with more days off, you know, for holidays and whatnot?
We did talk at one point in time about extending the school year and having breaks throughout, and that whole idea was kind of pushed to the back burner and, and put on hold, because it's so foreign to what it is that we currently do.
I know.
That there's a lot of, a lot of investigation and work that would need to go into that that wouldn't be able to be rolled over in a simple one-year cycle of presenting a calendar. That's, that's a much bigger undertaking. The, the committee was very interested in that. We looked at that. We attempted to create some examples of that, and we ran into road, roadblocks without being able to dive in deeper and have the time to be able to really indulge in what that would mean for the district.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else? No, okay. Yeah, I, I find that interesting concept too, but I could see a substantial amount of community input on that would be needed. Oh, yes, sorry, Commissioner Dux, go ahead.
Try a different angle. You haven't gotten to this yet, but how does more instructional, more instructional time work with professional development time?
Professional development.
Perfect.
Okay, great segue, thank you. When we looked at professional development, and I'm going to have James throw this up on the document cam, so everybody can see, there's a, board members, you all have a handout on this. Okay, so what's up on the screen, and board members, what you have in front of you, is the definitions for professional development. So, when we get to the actual calendar, it was very important to the committee that we were very purposeful in what it was that the time was being used for, when we had these days set aside, to make sure that if we were going to have a calendar that kept students out of school, so that staff could have an opportunity to collaborate, what did that time look like? And kind of who owned what time and what was that time supposed to be used for, so that it could get us to the goals that we need to meet. And so, what you have before you is a definition about both professional development time and examples of what that include. And so, in essence, as an umbrella, professional develop, development time on our district calendar is time that engages teachers as learners. And it gives some examples as to what would be included in those times. And then, down farther on your document, it indicates instructional planning time. And then down farther on your document, it indicates instructional planning time and what that looks like on our district calendar as well. And that time is time that's set aside for teachers to work in either department levels or grade levels, and that that's all a focus on a response to student learning regarding data and being able to go step by step and have time to analyze and determine common learning targets and everything that you see bulleted up in front of you. Because without the opportunity to do those things, it really sets us back in not being able to have the time for staff members to meet, to be able to pull this all apart, to be able to move the students forward. So we were very specific in terms of when you see the calendar, what time of each of these days is dedicated to professional development, what time is dedicated to instructional planning, and then you'll also see some time that's dedicated to school improvement plans. And that, of course, you know, has been part of everything we've brought forward to you over the past couple of years and what buildings are working on in their building in terms of improvements that the whole staff is working on within each building. And so there's time dedicated to that as well at the beginning of the school year for staff to be able to work on their school improvement plans. Does that help Commissioner Dux?
Well, it didn't exactly answer my question. I don't have to be convinced of the importance of professional development and staff development, departmental development, all of that. But how does that work into a typical day, school day, when the students are staying longer and the staff is staying longer? And how does that, can you give me an example?
Sure. And maybe it's that you need to, if I'm understanding your question, maybe it's that we need to get to the actual calendar so that, is your question, how does this play into the calendar? Yep, okay. So then if there aren't any other questions on this, then I think we'll jump forward. Okay. Oops, I'm hitting the button, and that's not what I need. Let's go to the calendar, seems like a good transition. Okay. So the proposed calendar starts in August with new teacher orientation are the four days of the darker gray, and then the five days in the lighter gray are two teacher work days that they have in the classroom, and then three days for district and building level professional development, the instructional planning, and then the SIP work. And so these are three days that we haven't had in the past. So these are new built-in days into the calendar that didn't exist before to provide staff members that opportunity of kind of the bulleted items that we talked about in the past document. When we look at September, we have a September first start date, and another document that you have was the state statute language, State Statute 118.045, the commencement of school term. There's a lot of questions about wanting to start school prior to September 1, simply because so many of our activities, I think we might have two high school football games in by the time we actually start school. So there's always a lot of question about, well, why don't we just start school earlier? Well, this is why, there's a state statute that prohibits us from doing that. And so I just wanted to make sure that you had that information so that you had it at your fingertips, that there was a law that prohibits us from doing that.
Could I ask a quick question, Kay? Did you explore any possibilities for waivers for specific things that could be done? I'm thinking like AP, because they end early, you know, whatever it would be, you know?
We looked at the waiver language included in the state statute and investigated other districts that have been able to secure waivers and people or districts that have attempted to secure waivers. There are very few that have been able to successfully do that. One that we're trying to kind of model, potentially pursuing, one of our neighbors, La Crosse, had done a consortium with many of their, I think there are six or eight surrounding districts in their area, and they created and drafted a very detailed waiver as to why their entire consortium wanted to be able to start prior to September 1st, and it was very detailed, very student-centered, and they were turned down. And so when the committee investigated that, we thought if that isn't going to happen with all of that very detailed, student-centered evidence as to why this was a good thing for all of those school districts jointly to pursue it, the idea of us being able to get that to be approved was probably going to be pretty slim, considering that in the state, there's very few. So we did investigate it from that standpoint. So then in September, the only other thing is obviously the Labor Day where we don't have any school. When we look at October, that starts our first, what I'm just going to call as professional development days, November, I'm sorry, October 9th being the first. Each time that you see a box that has, it's highlighted in blue, that would indicate that that's a professional development day. However, if there's a square around it, that's outlined like it is on the 9th, that means that not all of the students are out of session on that day. And there's a couple of times throughout the year where it occurs that high school is in session and the other two levels are out or vice versa. And the rationale for that usually has to do with when either the trimesters ended for elementary or when the semesters ended for secondary, and it was just more conducive to actual staff getting together to do their work at those points in time than to force something that didn't seem like a natural fit in the calendar. So as you can see in October, there's the first date on November, I'm sorry, October 9th, where elementary, middle school students are off. Staff has AM professional development and PM instructional planning. Again, very succinct in what it was we were looking at in terms of the time and what that time was dedicated for. And high school is in session on that day. We've got conferences for the middle school on the 20th, and then no school for students due to parent conferences for elementary on October 22nd, and middle school also on October 22nd. The high school doesn't do conferences that way any longer due to such a decrease in the attendance that they receive, so they don't do twelve or eight-hour blocks of time. You'll see that they have conferences later on in November for four hours in the evening. So while the other levels are doing parent-teacher conferences, the high school has their AM PD and their PM instructional planning. Oh, also in October, sorry, I missed the fall break. There's a fall break on October 23rd, which is the day after that parent-teacher conference day. So for families, that would be two days off in fall on the 22nd and the 23rd. In November?
Go ahead.
Yep, go ahead.
And that's new?
That is new. Yep, there's a fall, a fall break in October, and then that same type of schedule mirrors itself in February.
Is the reasoning that students are out, it wouldn't make sense to have them out on Thursday and have them come back Friday, but you're not going to put conferences on Friday because that would affect attendance?
I think that, over the years, I think conferences have been tried on multiple different days, and I don't think that Fridays ever have very high attendance, which is why it routinely kind of goes back to a Thursday for this large chunk of the twelve and eight hours. And I think when it comes to the break on the 23rd, preparing for parent-teacher conferences from a staff standpoint is, that whole week is a very, I don't know if the word is daunting week, but it's, that takes a lot of work at the elementary and middle school level to prepare for parent-teacher conferences. And so after doing those rounds of conferences, to have that following day off and then to come back fresh with students the following week was something that the committee felt would be beneficial. Any other questions about October? Okay. In November, this is also something new, and not the parent-teacher conferences on the 5th, or the elementary workday, there's always been an elementary workday that you see there on the 23rd. It's placed, the placement of it on the 23rd is different, but if you look at that highlighted section, the week of the 23rd, obviously that's the week of Thanksgiving break, and we've always had the 25th, 26th, and 27th off. However, in this calendar, the proposal is also to have the 23rd and 24th off so that those days can be used as professional development and instructional planning for teachers with that one portion of the day on the 20, or the day on the 23rd being used as a workday for elementary because that's the end of their trimester.
What was your, I assume, this has gone to PAC, for example, what was the feedback there from them on this?
I think that the actual proposal for this is scheduled to go to PAC next week Monday. We talked in general with the PAC early in the fall about...
We've had a couple of rounds with PAC when we did the planning for the family survey. We also took an initial draft of the calendar to PAC in October and got quite a bit of feedback from them, which is reflected in some of these decisions that, or recommendations that the committee brought forward. Now that we have a calendar presented to you, we'll take it back on Monday and get more feedback and bring that back to you.
Yeah, I was just thinking, a week-long now break, because, you know, it's different. I'm not saying against it, but it's different.
One thing to recognize about that, and Kay mentioned this, is we've traditionally had in the last several years anyway, a workday dedicated just for our elementary staff to close out and do the report card grading from their trimester. And that, the break for that trimester has always fallen just past Thanksgiving break. So it's never been tied before the break, placed before the break, but when it comes down to counting days, it was shortened it by one day and put it before the break, or shortened it by, or lengthened by one day and put it after the break. So we have for the last several years, either had it immediately after Thanksgiving break or within the week following Thanksgiving, the week after Thanksgiving break. So it is something there that that time has been set aside. And again, the secondary level has always had that as, set up during that time as a professional development time. But this is a change in that it puts it before, and it does also then take that other day and use that day for working on making highly qualified educators by using that professional development time, instructional planning time.
Okay, so then moving on to December. December is just the regular month, other than the winter break. You can see that winter break goes into January through the 1st, and it's not a full two-week break as we had this year because those two days are used for instruction on the 21st and the 22nd. Going into January, we come back from break, and the 25th and 26th, we kind of do a flip-flop with the workday for elementary, and the high school has a workday on the 26th. The elementary, middle school is in session, which is why there's a box around the 26th, and then the 25th is the professional development day again.
So I have a quick question about that. Eighteenth is Martin Luther King, I believe, right, the holiday? And I'm wondering, I could see some families that being an important day. Any reason why maybe not having that 18th, 19th instead? Or is it too soon?
It was too soon in the semester, and for the secondaries to end their semester a week earlier, we counted those days out, and that didn't put enough days in the semester.
Yeah, I kind of figured that. I've just always been a little concerned that, you know, Martin Luther King doesn't always, you know, get attention.
There was also a conversation about during that time, can we use, I mean, is it good to have the students in session to teach to that time and teach to what the importance of that day and teach to that celebration? Or to not have them in session and not have that direct opportunity on that day to talk about that and incorporate your lessons around that? So that was a conscious conversation we also had about what's the value of having that conversation, having that time to focus on that specific topic.
I can see that, thank you.
Okay, so that's January. Okay, moving into February, again, February mirrors on the 25th and the 26th what we saw in October with parent-teacher conferences on the 25th and the high schools being in session, and then that mid-winter break on the 26th. And then the 29th is also a professional development day. So for families in the month of February, that would be three student days. So when it's called a mid-winter break, that really is a mid-winter break because it's in the three days, three school days that they would be out of school. And only one of those days where staff would be out. Then in March, it's again, kind of mirrors December in that everything is the same except for spring break, and there's a full week of spring break there. April, there's a full month of school, other than the one day for professional development on the 11th, and all students are out for that, so there's no difference between the different levels. Then going into May, we have the professional development day on the 6th. As you can see, there's a box around it, so the high school is in session during those days. And then on May 30th, we're all out for Memorial Day. Looking at June, school year ends on June 3rd, with graduation for the high schools on the 2nd and the 3rd, and then staff's last workday is June 6th.
Commissioner Johnson?
How many student days are there?
There are 172 high school days and 170 elementary and middle school days. And this calendar, again, exceeds the number of, or yeah, the hours of instruction required by DPI for all three levels and continues to meet the contracted days for staff members.
Commissioner Dux?
I understand you had some discussions with Student Transit, so can you comment on that and let us know?
Actually, Jim and Marty are here, and they have a presentation for you after we're all finished, because there's, it's kind of an in-depth what the collaboration was between the district and Student Transit to be able to make this all work. And so they've got some information to share with you as well.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Well, just back to the dates, have we had 180 in the past? How many have we had in the past?
We have had...
The, when you take into account, the DPI at one time let us count minutes or time spent in parent-teacher conferences as part of the total number of days. So when they were counting days, the requirement was 180 scheduled days, and within those 180 days would be included time for your parent-teacher conferences if you chose to hold those in your district. So we always tried to schedule the entire school year within 170, required amount of hours, within 176 days. And that allowed for two days for inclement weather, and then allowed us also to borrow two days for parent-teacher conferences.
I was still on. So, and what about contract days? Is that 189?
Yes.
It's 189 and 186 actual contract days on site. There are three paid holidays within the 189.
And that is the same in this calendar as it has been in the past? So the adding minutes for the middle school and high school, do we have to do that if we accept your days?
Yes.
Why?
Just to clarify, we have to do that if we want to hit the target of X number of inclement weather days, of currently five at the high school, and then it trickles down to more for the middle and the elementary.
So if we didn't add 14 minutes and 24 minutes, how many inclement weather days are built in?
Well...
Depends on how many fewer minutes.
Right.
If we don't add any minutes, there's not enough time within the schedule to meet the DPI requirements.
How many more days would we have to add to meet the requirements if we didn't add minutes per day? We don't know that?
Well...
If we didn't...
If we didn't accept the portion that says we're going to add 24 minutes to the middle school day to get to six weather days, and we're not going to add 14 to the high school to get to... and we're not going to add 14 to the high school to get to five weather days, if we wanted to keep two weather days as we had in the past, would we have to add days?
We'd have to run some math on that just to make sure we don't give you a mis, a misrepresentation on the fly.
I could take a stab on that, but I think we'd have to go back and actually calculate with DPI formula.
There, there's an additional consideration, Commissioner Johnson, also in adding those minutes to the day. You know, we can now offer high school credit for courses that are taken at the middle school level. But the instructional time at the middle school level is far less than it is at the high school level. So in order to make those classes equitable in terms of instructional time, we would definitely need to add minutes to the middle school schedule.
So would, would it be accurate, Kay, to say essentially, you know, we have X number of minutes required by the DPI, right? We've added Y more minutes for five extra snow days, correct? And we've basically taken our days and pushed it in a little bit, so it moved up the length of the days a little bit. Including variables like PD, you know, professional development stuff. Is that kind of accurate, what's happened here essentially?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've moved it in, made them a little bit longer, the days, so that we could accommodate basically those three factors. Snow days, district, state required time, and then PD days.
Correct.
Okay. And, and ending earlier for the students.
Uh, well.
So by lengthening.
You mean by the school year earlier, not, not the day, not the day earlier.
Right, ending the school year earlier, yep. There is no, there's no magic bullet here, it's not a magic, magic calendar that we found six more days for professional development. It was a, I mean, there's only so many minutes and, and we are asking, the, I mean, to be frank about what we're asking of our staff, at least at our middle school, we're asking them for 24 extra minutes of student contact time every day out of their day. And to, it would be naive to think that that's not going to take out of, of some of the time that they usually use for prep work, collaboration, building meetings, team time. Although there's set a separate time for that, but, but put time to work with their colleagues and prepare. So this is an ask. And we're trying to provide for that blocks of time, concrete blocks of time where one is a district and is a building, we can help form and, and lead professional learning communities. And then give them separate time to say, with, with these guidelines, with this assistance, with this instruction, and this, this collaboration, now please work together with the data to build better common assessments, more common assessments. Here's additional time structure just for you to do this on these five to six additional days.
And, and the members of the calendar committee were comfortable with that? Obviously, I think, I assume. Well, comfortable may not be the right word, but it seemed like a good compromise for the situation. Commissioner Cummins.
Did you mention in the beginning how many times you met as a calendar committee?
I didn't give a specific number of days, but it was a lot.
Yeah. And are we at the end of the information you need to share with the board?
Well, Jim Fies coming up also, correct?
I would think that we would be moving close to moving for, this forward.
Uh, Commissioner Dux.
When you add minutes to a day, how does that get distributed?
You mean within the school day? When we, when we had the conversation at the committee and specifically with the parents, when we met with the parents and talked about the fact that there was the likelihood that there was going to be additional minutes added to different levels. Their focus at that point in time was to make sure that was, that those minutes were instructional minutes. That we weren't adding on, you know, minutes to passing time or the lunch period, that they were instructional minutes. And the minutes that you saw presented tonight are instructional minutes. They're being counted in the DPI formula for us to be able to spend that time with students during instruction. And those are instructional minutes.
In English class, that's 45 minutes, I don't know how long that.
Might now be 48 minutes.
Yeah. All right.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'm sorry. Um, okay, so I wholeheartedly understand the planning and professional development and that, and the importance of that. And how that will benefit children. But I'm concerned that this is heavily weighed towards the adult needs, frankly. We're going from 176 days, possibly as few as 174 days, nope, two weather in there. So hundreds, we're going from 178 to 176 days, down to 170 days with five weather days built in. So we, kids could be in school as little as 165 days. So we're, even though we're going to add minutes to make up for days, so theoretically kids are being instructed as much total time. Thinking about kids, it's already the stretch of their natural attention span to have them in school that long. To have them, having that much more instruction. I question whether the benefit of additional time is, in a day, is the same as additional days when they're fresh and aware and all of those things. So tell me how you've addressed that concern.
Well, I know that at the middle school specifically, I think that the addition of the 24 minutes, I don't know if Mr., or sorry, Dr. O'Reilly wanted to speak to this, but the addition of the 24 minutes at the middle school level is providing opportunities for staff and students that they didn't have before. That from a student's standpoint, we're able to do things that's beneficial to students because we're not having to pull them from, and again, Dr. O'Reilly, you might want to come up and speak to this personally so that I don't misspeak for you. But having to pull kids out of their enrichment classes?
One of the things we looked at was the intervention enrichment block that we're looking to add. And creating it so kids aren't pulled out of classes, they're exploratory classes where that additional help can feel more like a punishment at times. If we were able to do it as a separate class during the day with that time, all students would participate instead of just pulling certain students out for those interventions. So that's one of the things that we're looking at as far as use of that time.
Just, we did, we did it also to go to the other way of leaving things the same and looking at additional contract time or additional days for the staff to come and work on things. But extending the contract year for your staff is, is very expensive. And so, and that was one of the conversations that was also out there, is we brainstormed different types of solutions. If we need to, if we can provide more time for our staff, become better educators, and meet the, meet the demands coming from the state and meet our students where they're at. We, we can ask them to come in more time and pay them, or we can try and carve out more time. So please be aware that we also explored that option too.
Well, thankfully I'm not up for reelection when I ask this next question, but are we obligated by statute to pay staff by, if we added beyond 189 days?
Technically, no.
So we could add professional development days without adding to our budget?
Good, good questions. Are there comments, questions about this? Did we want Jim to come up next and talk a little bit?
That would be great.
Okay.
Your PowerPoint? Yeah. No.
My, my, no, my, I can't access it. But I just have a small, I can, I can go over it, I don't need it. Well, this is probably, I can do that, that's right. Otherwise, can I roll chat on there? So I had a, did you receive a brief by PowerPoint at all? Did that come, does that go to them? Evidently not, but.
I don't think so.
I'm having problems accessing it right now.
Okay.
In the meantime, it was just a short, a few bullet points. I can go over what they were. So the big challenge for us was the bell time schedule with this particular, the goals that they had set out to achieve. And Kay had mentioned adding the additional inclement weather days, adding the time, the extra minutes in the day to allow for students being, high school, middle school students being home at the same time or before, I should say before their elementary school siblings are home, was a huge challenge. And we looked at it for a long time and, and the, the problem we had initially was that the current bell time schedule we have achieves a lot of things. Achieves, it's very efficient. Things are tied and we have a lot of double runs, a lot of triple runs. More, more importantly than that, a lot of the drivers do the same thing AM and PM. A significant percentage of them do the same thing AM and PM, so they have the same faces AM and PM. So then we went back and met with Dr. Heiderbeck and Kay and Dan and said, okay, maybe we're looking at this too closely. I stepped back and said, okay, we still met these goals that Kay had set up to meet with the new calendar, but it affected the fact that we had to then give up something in terms of the bell, the bell times. And the, the start times of the elementary schools were the most impacted in this. And so, for example, and I can email this all to you if you haven't received it yet, but the, basically, you're talking about having to start the middle schools earlier to, to get their 24 minutes in the day. We have to start 15 minutes earlier at the middle schools and, and nine minutes later, that gets you your 24 minutes. Then, then the high schools, they would start at the same time as they do now. Because I don't think they can start a whole lot earlier because they have early bird classes, so that can't brush, brush into that. So we had to put the 15 minutes in the back of the high schools. So the challenge then became, okay, we, we're not going to be able to leave the high schools until 15 minutes later than what we're doing now. Most of your middle school, high school routes, with the exception of very few, most of your middle school, high school routes are work in conjunction with each other. So for example, they would leave south and go to Memorial. And then they get their Memorial kids and they head off on their routes. They finish their routes, they come back into town and go to an elementary school. So if you're leaving 15 minutes later, that means that, that window to get back to your elementary schools has to get pushed back later. So what we're asking for in the, with this proposed calendar is to say, okay, let us work with the elementary schools to say that we may need to do you, may, we may need to push your bell schedule back as much as 15 minutes, starting. So that means they would, because they already have enough minutes in the day. So they would start 15 minutes later and they would end 15 minutes later, up to that much. We would still go back and look and see if we can still, if, if the latest bus is only going to be eight minutes late, then we would say, okay, we'll make it 10 minutes later. But those are going to things, those are things that are going to take time. But at least it allows us to basically implement this proposed calendar for little or no additional busing costs by doing that extra, by allowing that 15-minute flexibility. Now that's going to be a, a challenge that we'll address again. Not saying that every school is going to, elementary school's got to start and end 15 minutes later, but we will need that 15-minute window in order to assure that we're not going to get into a tremendous increase in busing costs. And it would still allow us to keep a lot of the same drivers and the same faces and stuff like that. And that's very important because, you know, that's a huge safety thing. And as we know, having that familiarity with those students. So that way, when the drivers are getting their new kids every year, they're just basically hitting new kindergarten faces. They're not having to meet all kinds of new, new students and stuff like that. So all those kind of things where we can keep it consistent as much as we can. As you know, it's hard to find good drivers to get behind the wheel anyway, and we have a great group, dedicated staff. And I really don't want to upset that. So.
Commissioner Johnson.
Jim, I want to thank you for accommodating all of these, you know, changes and, you know, whatever we come up with. You figure out a way to make the logistics work. Do, do you know how many inclement weather days we've had over the course of history?
Well, back when I was in high school, this a few years ago, I knew it off the top of my head. It was always fun to have that kind of stuff. But I did do a little, I did do a little research. And this is very informal, but we don't, we don't keep exact records of it, but it was pretty close, I would say. So back in 2010 and 11, there was no snow days. 2011 and 12, we had one day on February 29th. 2012, 13, we did have four. December 10th, January 29th, February 14th, and March 5th. And we also had two late start days, February 11th and April 12th. In January of 13 and 14, we had four, four, four days that were inclement weather days. Two, three of those were actually due to the cold, due to the 30 below zero threshold that was met on those days. And then one was a snow day.
So apparently Patty already, you know, had like read our minds or something and. So, are there any, I mean, just quick off the top of.
We had four days off, then two, then two, then one, then three, then two, then one, then none in 10, 11, one in 11, 12. And then one, two, three, four. And one, two. Had a couple of days we didn't have after school, three, four. And then, yeah, so.
So I assume you, what you were getting at is do we need to incorporate five snow days into the calendar? Well, thank you, Jim, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Commissioner, yeah, I want to.
I'll get a copy of that.
I want, I want to echo what Wendy said, thanks for all your work.
You're welcome. And I'll get a copy of that since I couldn't bring it up tonight for some reason, so thank you.
Commissioner Cummins. Thank you.
Thank you for your work. I, I would assume, look, given the amount of minutes given to this topic, that we'd be ready to move this forward?
Commissioner Johnson.
I think the amount of time that kids are in school is exactly why we are here. And so if we're looking at decreasing it by 10 days a year, that is really troubling for me. And it's also troubling for me that we're, that we've had Jim do that much work on bus schedules, on starting and ending times, when for five years, we've been requesting that we, we consider the start times and the biological rhythms of our high school and middle school kids. And we're going to come with this calendar and add 24 days and 14 days and talk about completely redoing a bus system. And knowing full well that if we do that now, that we are not going to talk about changing start times, at least not for the next year. And that really makes me angry.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. Other comments? This will be going to PAC for feedback, right? So I, I think it will be interesting to see the Parent Advisory Council's feedback on this. Commissioner Jean.
2.18, and that is the average day.
Average number of snow days. Okay. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I, I, it was a rich conversation and lots of information. But I, I know that with the demands that are put on our academic piece with our children and the delivery piece of that within a professional learning community and the work it takes to get those, those systems working tip-top is, is, I, I know some said about adult heavy. That piece to, to move, that's, that's our, that's our, that's our ship to move our district to a high-performing district. And you have to have time to do that. So I mean, hopefully we can come to a happy medium here in the sense that there is a huge importance for those pieces of, of professional development and that instructional planning that we were never expected to do before. So that's different. Thank you.
Commissioner Dux.
I'd like to hear from the student representatives if they're ready to comment.
Yes, from my perspective, a longer school day is, like, the school day is already really long and by seventh hour, you're losing attention span. So adding minutes could stress that and make that even more difficult to pay attention. But also from a student who's taking many AP courses, I see. But also from a student who's taking many AP courses, I see the benefit of added minutes because it's, it's a struggle to get in all of the information before the AP test and be able to review, so I can see the benefit of adding the minutes. But I want to make sure that the minutes aren't wasted in not being able to focus in a class because you've been there for too long. Also, I'm concerned that adding the minutes would push the athletics back even later in the night. I know gym time is already really hard to schedule and it goes to 8:30, 9 o'clock most nights, and that would potentially get pushed even later and the students would have less time for homework if they're involved in athletics. And then it would, it could result in less time for sleep and less focus in school the next day. I'm just concerned about how the entire, like, as a high school student, how that would affect us.
Thank you. John, Jonah?
First, I'd like to talk about the getting rid of, getting rid of Wednesday's collaboration. I think that's definitely a positive thing for, since I've been a, since I've been a high school student, I guess, four years now. It's been, it's been a thing that teachers are all in their, in their professional development and students are just kind of left, left for 30 minutes in the building waiting for their buses. It's been really an unproductive thing, they can't hold club meetings without teachers. So I think that's good to get rid of, to get rid of that. The concerns over, to speak of, to speak to the concerns of having extra, extra minutes, yes, it would be good in, it would be good in regards to the AP schedule to have those extra minutes, but at the same time, it's going to be, I mean, how many minutes added to each class, I'm not exactly sure. How many minutes would be added to each class? Do you?
At the high school level?
Yeah.
Well, there's...
A little less than three, two to three.
I guess the concerns aren't that. It's minimal. I don't see the problem with adding an extra couple of minutes, frankly, but...
Commissioner Dux?
Thank you for commenting. I'd like to think about this a little more, but I know that a high school student and middle school too, all of the things that students do to learn outside of school are important too. And I feel that we're compressing the days, we're adding more and compressing them. So I'm, I'm just going to have to think about it, but I know as a teacher, you can only expect focus and concentration for a certain amount of time. Three minutes doesn't sound very long, but if you add that to every class, sometimes it's a good thing, sometimes not so good. You like things to move quickly and other times you have a class where you need to think about something and write. And, I don't know, I just, I haven't made up my mind. But I do appreciate the work of the committee, but I'm disappointed that we didn't get to talk about the school day in terms of, as Commissioner Johnson said, in terms of psychological bio rhythms.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Is the only reason we didn't look at the high school start times as, you know, look at the bigger picture there because of early bird?
Are you referencing switching start times? It's my understanding that the board requested a recommendation from the committee about whether or not that should be something that the board pursues moving forward, and that recommendation is coming in February. So that was separate from the 15, 16 calendar.
Right, we had separate issues because we knew we had to take care of next year's calendar for sure, we made that decision. But I think Hannah's point is good, is well taken about a later time affecting, for example, extracurricular and so forth, which, if you switch start times, also affects that question. So they are definitely related. So I've heard some mixed opinions here about moving forward. We were hoping to bring this to resolution next time after we get PAC feedback. I've heard some questions about whether or not we should incorporate that number of snow days in or end as early as June 3rd. You can, any suggestions from board members will be taken, but otherwise in agenda setting, we'll talk about whether to do that next time, but we really, we do need to move forward with the calendar. And I, I really appreciate all their work, it's a lot of things to juggle to do this and with their goals in mind. So any feedback on how you'd like to move forward, otherwise we will discuss the agenda setting, how to move forward and how to take these comments. Does any, any board members have specific comments about the number of snow days? That's certainly one that I've heard that, I've heard several here so far, so.
Have the teachers, thank you, I'm sorry, have, have teachers been surveyed about their feelings about that type of calendar?
In collaborating with Dr. Hardbeck, after the board presentation tonight, this information will go out in the district update on Friday with, depending on what happens at agenda setting, some type of communication to the staff in terms of how they can share their input, whether it be directly with board members or through your voice or however it is that the board determines that you'd like to receive that input from the staff. So that information will go out, but they have not, the committee has not gone out as representatives from their specific areas and shared the information prior to the board receiving it.
Commissioner Cummins?
Typically, hasn't the committee served as the focal point for staff to give their feedback? This has always been a very successful, robust committee. I don't ever recall hearing directly from staff on the calendar. I've always assumed that that has gone through the committee members.
In the, in the past, certainly this was a negoti, this was actually a negotiated item. So a committee of teacher representatives would sit down with administrative or board representatives and have discussions looking at the entire school year and then bring back brainstorms to teaching staff, soliciting feedback, and we would have a regular feedback loop built into our building rep meetings and our 10-minute meetings that we'd hold at the individual schools. And then ultimately it came out through a survey and some type of a voting process where we would say, okay, here are several calendars, two to four perhaps, that move things around and provide different opportunities at different times, and then solicit a vote on that, and that would come back with a recommended vote that then would be offered as a final negotiated request. So that's what's happened in the past. Since the end of that process, it has been, there has been less of that going out and soliciting direct feedback. And certainly as we made these, these more significant changes this time, all of this, much of this work was done with this committee exclusively focused on research, best practices, discussions with any parameters that we could get from leadership or from, from the board on how to move forward. So this has not gone back, as Kay was saying, to the, your teachers or to any of your staff per se to say, how do you feel about this and bring that forward either to the committee or to another, another venue.
Commissioner Johnson?
Would this be the first calendar where we've not had 180 days as well? So this would be a very different calendar than, so I guess the input that I would be looking for is how the teachers are going to be able to accommodate their curriculum to have six less teaching days a year and, you know, and how the students will be able to learn as much as they do now.
I would concur, I think that would be good to know. Commissioner Cummins?
I just think we can put this on the agenda next time we talk in our work session about the key work of school boards. I'm having a hard time figuring out where the last 45 minutes and the questions fit into that. Feel free to disagree. We set the vision, it's very clear how we get there is not our work. This is so far beyond micromanaging, I don't even have a word for it.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Cummins. Seeing no more comments, thank, thank you for the presentation and I think it was well done and the committee worked. So I think we'll discuss agenda setting, how to move forward with that, and we'll definitely have something on the agenda next time. All right, thank you very much. A lot of work. Okay, the last major item on our agenda is the WASB resolutions for the delegate assembly. Really had two, there's really two things we need to approve here tonight. One is to approve which, if any, of the resolutions we would like to support at the State Education Conference. But the second is we actually need to appoint a delegate who represents that, and I think we have two members going, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle and Commissioner Dux, correct? So we need to appoint a delegate for that. I think there's a standard delegate, I suspect that's usually the president, though I'm not sure, and I won't be there anyhow. So I think we need to do those two things. My suggestion is, is that hopefully you've had a chance to read through this and look at it, that we identify those that members might have an issue with and we approve the rest just altogether and then discuss those few. Does that sound a reasonable process? Commissioner Cummins?
That sounds reasonable. I, I wouldn't say there were any that I have an issue with. There are three that I feel particularly strongly about, so whoever the delegate is, if we could kind of hear what the conversations are about it, and I feel the rural school staff recruitment and retention...
You want to give?
15-13.
Yes, thank you.
I feel looks very creative and positive. I feel really strongly about 15-15 with the shift in Sage to go from class size reduction to achievement gap reduction, and then 15-17, alternative licensure pathways in response to teacher shortages. So I don't, all of them are fine with me, those three I feel very positive about and hope, hope there's some robust discussion about those.
Okay, thank you. So those you, you feel, you don't, you're not interested in pulling any from approving, you just want more information or support those more? Okay, others? Actually, I was hoping to actually poll 15-17 to look at a little bit more and discuss that, so that one I would like to look at separately. Commissioner Dux?
A few years ago, it was suggested that music minors be able to have charge of full programs because of shortages. My department at the university studied that and we concluded that we felt that we were cheating people who've been through the full program and took full degree, that we were cheating them for their jobs. And we sent word to DPI and to the legislature that we did not approve of that, and several other state departments did the same in music. That's all I can say about music, but, that's not all I can say about music, but, I think we have to think about people who have worked usually five years in school to get certified in an area and then they can't get a job because somebody who can do multiple tasking gets the job, and I'm, I'm not for it.
So are you referring to 15-17 specific?
Right.
Okay.
Where you use alternative licensure.
Okay. But before we get it specific, we'll, we'll just hold that for a second. Are there any others that we should poll before we discuss any individually and we can go back to that? Anyone else? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Cummins.
You know, we didn't, we didn't hear from administration, I'm assuming maybe if there was something major that you wanted, because, especially the Sage one, if that sounds like, that, that sort of aligned itself with what we've been hearing from administration in terms of Sage and some of the handcuffing that Sage does, so I'm assuming that that would be something you would support.
Okay, good point, so you don't have any, just a comment on any others specifically? Okay, thank you. All right, then, then I would entertain a motion to, to direct our delegate, which we'll prove who that is in a minute, to support all the resolutions except 15-17, which we may still support, but poll that one for now, and...
So moved.
So we have a motion from Tricia Cummins to approve those others. Do I have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Hamburg Boyle. Any other discussion about the other resolutions?
I, I just had the one about open enrollment, maybe since we discussed that today in policy and governance, in that WASB supports shortening that window, which I'm all for.
Good, all right. Any other discussion on those, on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of approving that motion, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. So we have 15-17, teacher shortages and alternative lesser pathways, and I, this is what your comment was about a second ago, Commissioner Dux. Mine was, it seems kind of vague, it's not clear to me if I would support it or not, because I'm not sure exactly what they mean by alternative pathways. And, you know, I, I wouldn't necessarily oppose supporting this, but it's just, you know, some things I may not, depending on what they came up with. So that was really my comment.
I think too, you know, they do mention, which they often didn't with alternative pathways, about the rigorous training in pedagogy and assessment and classroom management. That didn't always necessarily part of an alternative pathway if someone came in with work experience and the fact that they knew the subject matter, but not necessarily the pedagogy and teaching it. And so I agree with you, it, it at least speaks to that, whereas before, when you often saw things brought about like this, when they didn't. So that to me is a positive, that usually isn't there.
Commissioner Cummins?
And I, I think that we have no idea what the future is going to bring, but we know education majors are down. And so I think this just, again, we still, as a district, can have our own standards, we, you know, there's definitely the, like Commissioner Hamburg Boyle mentioned, there's rigorous training put in here, but I also don't think an education degree is the only way into the classroom. I think that there are, charter schools for, for years have been able to do alternative licensing, and I think, especially in some of the hard-to-fill areas, pulling people back from industry and, and in smaller districts who are really struggling, I just think there's, I think this is going to be necessary in the future and starting it with that high, you know, high qualification in mind is going to happen eventually.
Commissioner Dux?
Well, I don't need, I mean to be smart, I like, but I wouldn't want to go to anybody that had partial training in medicine.
Point well taken.
I, this, what this is saying is that somebody, let's say somebody works in computer science and they didn't get an education degree, they went back and got some training but not, didn't have just that specific education degree, that they would be able to, this isn't like just walk in the classroom. So I, I think that, you know, there are, there are professionals in areas that we're going to need to pull back in specifically in technical education is one area, or perhaps, I think it's just inevitable, and I don't, I don't think we're lowering the standards.
Commissioner Jean?
Well, I've had instruct, adjunct instructors who had a lot of experience outside of, you know, in the field, and they'll come into the classroom, and they keep me very entertained, you know, with their stories about, you know, how they handle certain situations and, and it's, it's very, I was very entertained by some of those instructors, but you could tell that some of them do lack, yes, the, yeah, the ability to effectively deliver a lesson. I mean, they keep you entertained, but to learn something is a little different. And I think with the, with enough training, I think they would be good, but we have to, there has to be a standard. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, there has to be a standard.
Okay. I would like to point out, it does say provide pathways to licensure still. It does say to licensure still, so that makes me feel better as well as what you said about the last sentence. Any other comments? And by the way, we should have, if someone wants to, we should have a motion to, to support this or not, to get moving here.
So moved.
So we have a motion to support it from Commissioner Jean. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
So, we have a second to support it. Any other comments, anything that would help you on this one? Okay, all those in favor of supporting Resolution 15-17, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
We have one opposed. The motion passes to...
I abstain.
We have an abstain. Abstention, thank you, from Commissioner Johnson. Finally, we do need a resolution to approve a delegate to this, excuse me, yes?
That was appointed at the beginning of the year, and that was Catherine.
It was.
You were the delegate, and she was the alternate.
Ah, okay, so we did do that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So, we do not need that. Thank you for pulling that out. One last thing to do tonight. Okay, you know, I forgot at the end of calendar discussion, and I would do it now, I forgot to ask if there's public comment. First, on the WASB delegation, delegate resolutions, are there any comments on that from the public? Anything on the calendar discussion from the public? I forgot to ask that last time. Okay, all right, sorry about that. I tend to forget if I don't have it written in front of me. All right, that's it. Do we have any future agenda items from school board members? Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I'd like to bring up a discussion with the board about supporting the Wisconsin Public Education Network, WPEN, and the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellent Schools have built a relationship, a network, that supports public education across our state. So, they've taken all the different little pieces of communities that have backed and done some activism relative to public schools, and they're pulling it all together on a statewide basis. And I'd like to have a discussion on how we would feel about participating and being members of that group.
Okay, great. It's a very good group. Thank you. Any other agenda items? Seeing none, and I believe we have no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Duax and a second from Commissioner Jean. All those in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for a great, robust discussion tonight.
This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067 or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.